Do we have the roll call, please?
Here.
Here.
He is ill this evening, so Commissioner Hernandez will be acting chair this evening.
Great, thank you. So the first item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes. I wasn't here for the last meeting, so...
No, I wasn't here either. I mean, we don't have a quorum to vote for this.
We did ask city staff earlier if they could approve it, and they said that they could approve with two of the three commissioners who were present. So...
John, I move to approve the minutes of...
What date was that? February 9th?
February 9th.
Okay, we have the motion. Roll call, or just a roll call? Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. So that, uh, the motion is passed. We have the approval of the agenda, the next item.
I move we approve the agenda dated March 8th, 2016.
Do we have a second? Second? And vote?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. So, done. And then we have the planning manager's report. Bruce?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just to give you a quick update on some items that the planning commission may be interested in. On tomorrow, on March 9th, we have a community development director hearing for a proposal for a second dwelling unit at 3:23. Poplar. Thank you. Yes. And then, um, for your meeting on March 22nd, we, uh, are targeting code amendments for, to bring our code into compliance with state law regarding large family daycare, and also some follow-up amendments to the R2 duplex residential zone to eliminate constraints to, in the interest of providing incentives for affordable housing. So, and those were set forth in the general plan, in the housing element, to eliminate constraints, so we're following up on that. So we're targeting that for March 22nd. And then for April 12th, we've scheduled a planning, a California Environmental Quality Act workshop, the same workshop that Planning Commission had last year, the year before last. The same person is planning on attending to conduct this workshop. This workshop, the last workshop, we focused more on notice of exemptions, categorical exemptions, statutory exemptions in the California Environmental Quality Act, also known as CEQA. This session will be focused on more complicated environmental documents like negative declarations, mitigated negative declarations, and environmental impact reports. And they'll spend a little bit more time discussing the relationship between lead agency and responsible agency, because we've had a lot of those environmental documents recently, so we think that'll be helpful. So that's identified for April 12th. And then on April 13th, we have four items for a director, community development director hearing. These are new single-family residences. The first is proposed at 444 Corias. The second one is proposed at 549 Grove. The third is proposed at 217 Valdez. Uh, actually, just three of them. So, 444 Corias, 549 Grove, and 217 Valdez. And, which informs me, the coastal benches coastal development permit. Uh, those trigger, new benches trigger coastal development permits, so those will also be on that hearing, so we'll have four items on there. And then, um, so far, for, um, April 26th, we're targeting the library hearing. We think that's still a pretty firm date. Um, and then on May 10th, um, we have been asked to reserve that for general plan items. Jill asked me to reserve that for, uh, general plan items that are yet to be developed. We also may move in the, um, uh, school district proposal for the athletic field improvements at, at Happy Bay High School. It's possible that could, could, uh, could hit that May 10th Planning Commission date. And then on May 24th, we have, um, the capital improvement program consistency presentation of the Planning Commission, and your role is to see that, if those, make a determination if those projects are consistent with the general plan, the list of capital improvement projects, and also familiarize you with the list of capital improvement projects that are working their way through in the next year's budget. Uh, do you have any questions? I'd be happy to answer them.
I think, uh, the question or concern I have is April 12th. I know I'm not going to be here, so, um, I don't know what other people's calendars look like for that week, but I know that I can't be down the week of 12th.
The 26th, did you say the library, is that the, the full hearing approval by the Planning Commission?
Yes, that's where we're targeting.
Just a note, I, I will not be here on, at that meeting, so... FYI.
Thank you.
Uh, Bruce, I have a couple of questions. Um, on the tracking sheet, there's an item that, that was approved, um, back in February for the removal of two Monterey pines at, um, Junior Middle School Field. And I know that over time, a number of those trees have been removed, and probably most of them should be, because those pines along Highway 1 are failing. Are they replacing those trees? Because I haven't seen a single replaced tree after those trees have been removed.
I'm, I'm sorry, could you, could you repeat the question again? I'm sorry.
Sure. Uh, line 36 on the tracking sheet, uh, concerns the tree removal permit that was granted for removal of two Monterey pines at Cunha, at the field there.
Yeah.
Uh, over the last year, maybe year and a half, a number of those trees have been removed because they've, they've died. I mean, they're, they're failing trees along there. Um, I'm just wondering if those trees are being replaced, uh, because I haven't seen any new trees going along there.
We can look into that. I wasn't aware there were other tree, tree removals. These two will be replaced, um, but we can look into that and get back with you. I'm not aware that there were other removals outside of a permit.
Um, and also on the subject of trees, I know that when, about a year ago, when we reviewed and approved the skate park, one of the conditions of approval was that, I can't remember the number, four, five, or seven trees were to be located off-site on city property. Have those locations been identified yet?
Not that I'm aware of. Not that I'm aware of, no.
Then, then I want to bring it up as a, as something to keep in mind, because it was a condition on the project. Um, and, and finally, for the, uh, for the code amendments that you mentioned coming up for the, uh, R2 zoning district, considering the R2 zoning district is significantly less, covers significantly less than 10% of the residential designated areas in town, um, if one lives in the R2 zoning district, does the public generally exemption apply?
I would read... I would think it has to. It's a citywide amendment.
It's, it's, it's going to be a very fact-specific inquiry, but I'd, I'd have to do the math, to be quite honest, as to whether that's going to be an impact or not. The public generally exception for real property investments is a 25% line draw, so you have to determine, will the proposed amendments affect 25% or more of the type of property we're talking about? If we're doing a citywide residential zoning update or a citywide zoning update, uh, I believe that the, the application of new zoning standards would probably affect more than 25% of residences, but in order to be certain about that, we'll have to do some due diligence, and we can follow up with our, our FPPC contacts to get a formal opinion letter to make sure that there's no questions about that.
If, if we can get a heads up on that.
I'll, I'll follow, I'll follow up with some correspondence to you, and we'll, we'll dial down the question, because we have to ask a very specific question to get that formal advice letter that protects all of you from any type of liability.
Understood. Okay. Thank you.
Reed Gilogly, our city attorney, wanted to add something else to the report?
Uh, just briefly, uh, I, I guess Lauren left with the good old Irish goodbye and didn't, didn't communicate what was going on, but Lauren, I don't know if many of you know, if she's talked to any of you individually, uh, she is the head of the Pajaros Valley Water Management Agency now, and is deciding to focus more of her time on serving that aspect of her client base and pursuing some other real estate investment opportunities. So, she's no longer going to be providing city Planning Commission services. I will be stepping into that role. So going forward, if you guys have questions, concerns, comments, want to meet and talk, discuss any type of code interpretations, that's, uh, that's what I'm here for, and looking forward to working with all of you and getting to know you better now.
Welcome to the team, I guess. You've already been on the team.
Yeah, I should also say that Lauren did express her gratitude and appreciation. Uh, it sounds hollow coming from me, but she, she genuinely wanted to thank all of you for, uh, the professionalism and the relationships and working together, and she wishes everyone the best. Um, I may still call her up once in a while, because that institutional knowledge that she has about how things have been done here for a long time is, is irreplaceable, but she's, but she's not going to be a primary contact for us.
Uh, please pass our comments along to her. I think your feelings mutual.
Happy to do so.
So, does that conclude? Does anybody else have any comments or questions with respect to the Planning Manager's report? Okay, so we'll move along to public comment. This is the portion of the meeting where if you would like to make a general comment about something not on the agenda, you may provide, fill out one of the green sheets. Uh, if you want to make the comment and you haven't filled out the green sheet, just go ahead and step to the podium and give us the green sheet afterward. Does anybody have any general comments? Okay, we'll move on. Public comment is the opportunity for anyone in the public to address the board with anything that's within its subject matter jurisdiction. Although you may ask her the question, you can make any comments you like, they may not be able to respond, and that's why I would caution you, is that you're not allowed necessarily to engage in a long back and forth.
Good evening, my name is Paul Gregorius. The question is, will the CEQA presentation, I think you said it was April 12th, be in an open public meeting such as this? Will the public be able to attend?
Yes.
That'd be great. Thank you very much.
And, and we are glad to have as many people from the public commiserate with us during this training. It's a great opportunity for people to learn about CEQA, so, and several people joined us last time as well, so...
Mr. Chair, can I add too that, uh, we also taped the last one and have, uh, copies of that PowerPoint presentation from the last time, uh, yeah, on the website, on the city website. We'll do the same thing again.
Thanks, Bruce. Appreciate it. Okay, um, so, the next item on the agenda is the, uh, we have item number six, bless you, uh, public hearing item, PDP 16 dash 004. Bruce?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, this project is the Seymour Bridge Replacement Project. As most of you already know, uh, this is the location of the Seymour Bridge in red, shown on the, the aerial here. The property to the north is what we refer to as, as the former landfill site. The property to the south is owned mostly by the Coastal Land Trust, and it used to be formerly, uh, farmed as zag land. In terms of, um, background, in the, um, 1950s, the site, it was used as an unofficial dump site, and then between 1962 and 1976, the site was used as a Class III accounting landfill. And then in 1978, the landfill was capped and graded, and then again in 1997, the county moved on some surface watering monitoring implementation. Uh, gas concerns were identified, and some corrective grading was conducted on the site to promote positive drainage. This map shows, uh, the extent of the, you know, landfill, uh, which is now capped. You can see the areas, um, in to the, actually, this map is reversed, so, north is to the bottom and south is to the top, but at any rate, in the real world, the areas to the north, east are the orange shaded area where there's landfill, and then the area to the south, that's northwest, and then the area to the southeast is where the landfill is. And you can see in this overhead, it's a little difficult to see, but where the existing bridge, where the former bridge is located, and there's callouts on the exhibit. It's about 250 feet away from the landfill site. Um, and also in 2004, 2010, 2013, there were a series of landfill gas monitoring wells that were installed to, um, monitor the, the gas operations. Those are still underway today by the county. And lastly, this request really, this, this, the bridge replacement triggers coastal development permit, and so this is to replace the existing bridge with a new bridge and extend the trail to the new bridge location, and then remove the existing bridge when those improvements are completed. Is, this is, um, under current conditions, this is a fairly recent photo, folks may have been out there, but, uh, the Seymour drainage is experiencing severe erosion. It's threatening the existing bridge. Here's another photo. Anthony took this photo. You can see underneath the wide gap and the erosion that's occurring within the drainage and the damage and the threat that the existing bridge is now experiencing or under. Here's a closer view of the bridge and, uh, the erosion beneath it and how close it's getting to the abutments. Here's a series of photos, um, from, starting in 1972, when at the time, there was a drainage, there was a pipe there, so you can see that we weren't having all this erosion back in 72, um, because there was a big pipe. And then another photo of it in 79, the pipe is still functioning. And then somewhere between 79 and 2002, in the 80s or 90s, the pipe broke off, and you can see how the, the erosion at the outlet has really accelerated in the opening of the, of the, uh, the, um, outfall there. You can see here in 2004, how it's widening, uh, that outlet gap. Again, in 2008, still getting even wider, and it's incising, moving further eastward up the stream. And, uh, and here's an aerial from 2013, and shows how close it's getting, the actual bridge alignment. So we have a serious erosion problem, and that's why we'd like to replace the bridge. The new bridge would be located 105 feet eastward or upstream. So, to describe the project, there's really four key phases. The first is the installation of the new bridge, uh, new bridge abutments. The second phase is the installation of the bridge infrastructure. The third phase is the extension of the trails to the new bridge location, and the last phase of the fourth phase is the removal of the existing bridge. In, in the approach, we had a kind of a multidisciplinary approach on this, where we involved engineers, architect, engineers, environmental consultants, and biologists in locating the new bridge location. So some of the guiding principles in designing and citing the bridge replacement, uh, were that a new bridge location was found within the clearing of the tree canopy, so no tree removals are, are proposed, because we were able to find this opening about 105 feet east of the existing bridge crossing. The bridge abutments would be set back outside the top of the bank, so no work would be necessary within the waterway. The construction access routes would utilize, uh, the existing Poplar Beach parking lot and the existing coastal trail that's paved now. And environmental avoidance measures have been integrated in the project to minimize and avoid any impacts, and those are recommended with conditions that are attached in the biological report. Here's a schematic of the design. You can see, uh, the existing bridge crossing to the top left corner, and then the extension outside of the tree canopy, and then cutting perpendicular across to the new bridge crossing. The bridge design features, the, the new bridge would be about 10 feet wide, enough to accommodate two-way Americans with Disability Act accessibility in both directions. So it'd be about 10 feet wide, and about a 45-foot clear span. The bridge would be, uh, prefabricated offsite, delivered ready for installation. It would be manufactured of tubular marine-grade aluminum truss with aluminum floor beams and floor stringers, and, uh, the deck would be non-pressure-treated natural Alaskan yellow cedar decking. So the key aspects of this analysis are really the conformance with the zoning ordinance. This, it's, this project's pretty, um, easy to conform with the zoning ordinance. We did comply, prepare a biological report, it was prepared by H.D. Harvey and Associates, and in conformance with the zoning ordinance requirements as they relate to coastal resource standards and visual resource standards in locating the bridge away from the scenic corridor, it's tucked in where the other bridge is along the trees, and doesn't obstruct any views, and it also complies with the plan unit development, uh, standards, plan unit district development standards for the Wavecrest Restoration Area. The conformance with the general plan and local coastal plan is also, um, easy to, to meet in a number of ways, including consistency, and it actually implements the Wavecrest Restoration Plan and Plan Unit Development. There are also a number of key, uh, local coastal, local coastal program general policies that the project is consistent with and hazard, and a hazard policy. But for example, um, by providing the, uh, formal trail extension, it avoids, and a continuous trail extension, it avoids, uh, informal trail use that may create more environmental disturbance with haphazard informal trail use, and keeps people on the, the formal trail where they're supposed to be. The new alignment is set back further, further eastward from the bluff, um, in a pretty secure location. And then the, um, then the, the project itself has been integrated as environmental avoidance measures to avoid any impact on any aspect of, of biological resources. But before we get into, you know, just the fixing of the bridge, we needed to take a look at long-term drainage and erosion solutions, so the city's moving in two important directions to, to address that. The first is, we're underway with the preparation of a citywide storm drain master plan that evaluates the existing system deficiencies and recommends a program of capital improvements to fix those deficiencies, with the idea that some of the key strategies, if you will, in addressing long-term drainage is to look at upstream and offstream drainage retention and, um, detention opportunities, upstream and upstream. Secondly, there's more of a focus survey that's underway, which is a strategic study of the sub-basins to specifically identify repair and restoration options of the coastal trails. Um, you know, this season's been particularly, the storm season's been particularly hard on all the trail infrastructure, but this work involves, um, looking at infrastructure improvements to drainage outfalls, uh, open drainage, drainage ways, bluff erosion, and bridge repairs that may be necessary. So that's in the, in the scheme of a long-term solution to get out of, to address the, the erosion problem in the drainage.
Bruce, uh, what is the timeframe for the master storm?
The, the phase one is underway right now, and the capital improvement projects will be developed, developed in next fiscal year in 16, 17.
Thank you.
Recommendations. And then, uh, lastly, the environmental determination, this is a replay, a repair and replacement of an existing structure, and the California Environmental Quality has a specific exemption for that kind of a project, and this project fits that exemption perfectly, so this is exempt, uh, pursuant to Section 15302, which is replace, replacement and reconstruction of existing facilities on the same site. And then, um, our recommendation would be to approve the project subject to, uh, the conditions, the draft resolution and the conditions of approval in the attached resolution. I'd also like to, uh, point out that we have, uh, we got a late memo, or late email from the Coastal Commission staff, and they have some suggested, um, avoidance measures that they thought would be helpful to integrate. We've had our consultants take a look at those, and, and it's, uh, it's unfortunate, because we have a 45-day review process. These comments were due back in January, and they came in this afternoon, so it didn't really allow us a lot of time to confer with our, with the Coastal Commission staff, but there are some things they, they really kind of missed and overlooked, like for example, they're questioning whether or not the project involved a replacement bridge, and yes, that's, if they would have read the description of the project, it does include a replacement bridge and the removal of the existing bridge. So there's some things that were missed and overlooked that we didn't get a chance to discuss with them, but we did discuss it with our environmental consultants, and they have provided a response to those comments, and, and attachment to to the memo I provided. And we believe that all of these concerns have been satisfactorily addressed and integrated into the, the avoidance conditions that are recommended with the project. Anyway, that concludes my report. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Great.
Thank you, Bruce. Um, are there any questions for Bruce or city staff?
Yeah, uh, I was, uh, reading, uh, it says over here, LCP areas, specific policy 2.22. It says, uh, hazard policy, et cetera, et cetera, that the lifespan of the development should be at least 50 years. Tell me about, uh, I haven't seen any, any structure, bridge, uh, that has lasted 50 years on the coastal trail, so, uh, tell me about this, uh, this bridge and what your estimates are.
Well, there's a, a response is, there's a, there are some precedent, preceding things that need to occur, like the long-term drainage and erosion solutions, and we're, we're, we're expecting that that is going to be addressed sooner than later, and that's part of the long-term solution that would promote the longevity of this. And it has been, the, the structure has been designed for, you know, um, to be, to weather the marine environment better, and so it's corrosion-resistant. I have the structural engineer here, Anthony Richardson, he may be able to add a little bit more to that, but, um, we believe it's a long-term solution, especially located further, 105 feet further back from where it is.
John?
In the, um, erosion control and drainage, um, so will that include sort of stopping the bluff erosion that's happening, coming back up that kind of creek channel?
I don't think we're going to stop it. I think what it would do is, would, what we're looking at doing is taking the, getting control of those flows, either upstream or offstream, or channelizing them into some, some physical improvement or another pipe, which would significantly slow the rate of erosion down. You can see from those earlier photos in the 70s with the pipe, there was pretty, pretty steady, and the erosion process was much more gradual than it is now. It accelerated after the pipe was broken.
So it's, it's geared at, um, controlling the runoff going forward. So in the history of the coast, we've seen these ditches, once they get started, like when a farmer plows the hill up and down, um, then it, from my understanding, the erosion is also, then, once the sides of the ditch are exposed, that the rain keeps, keeps, and, and I'm not trying to be expert here, I'm, by any means, but my question is, is moving the bridge 150 feet, is there any way at all to say, well, okay, that's good for X years or not, or, you know?
I, we, we're just assuming that, you know, we know that phase two of this really, this is the phase one. Phase two of this involves a long-term drainage solution, and, uh, I think we're comfortable that that, that's, uh, the best that we can do.
Thank you.
Tom?
Bruce, the staff report in your presentation tonight said the bridge is 10 feet wide, but the drawings say 8 feet wide. It is 10 feet wide?
The council gave us direction to go to 10. The drawings do say 8, but it will be... The drawings do say 8, but it will be 10.
Okay. Okay. When the planning commission heard and approved the coastal development permit for the trail south, CLT's trail going south from Seymour, one of the conditions was that the land trust and the city would work together. It was relatively vague, and the city engineer at the time recommended that it remain vague. But one of the conditions was something to the effect of the city and the applicant should work together for a future relocation of the Seymour Bridge. I'm curious what, if anything, happened there. And secondly, how that relates to the alignment of the trail heading south of the bridge?
I don't, I did check with Coastside Land Trust, and they actually, we had to get their permission to file this application because the abutments aren't on their property. In terms of the coordination, I don't think they had any plans developed that they authored, and the plans that are presented are ones that we developed. And I think that also corresponds with their interest in maintaining a continuous trail connection and avoiding informal trail use.
Yeah, I strongly suspect they want the trail to continue there. I, because I'm looking at the alignment of the trail headed south off the bridge, and it's, I mean, it's like, it's staggered. If you're jogging out there or riding a bike or even walking, it's unnatural. I mean, it goes, it makes a 90-degree turn, and another 90-degree turn, and then another 90-degree turn. Just from looking at the plans, there's not, you know, there's no survey of the tree locations there. I'm just curious how the consultant came to that, and if that questionable alignment can be remedied.
Well, I think on the south part, the trail up to the existing bridge comes in that way. So the trail has kind of a, of a westward, east-west alignment parallel to the drainage. And this just extends it a little further to the east. But on the south side?
Yeah, I mean, just looking at this plan, it looks like it goes out about 20 feet, makes a sharp right turn for 20 feet, makes a sharp left turn for the top left of the drawing there. I'm, I'm just hoping for, you know, for the folks who might be jogging or riding bikes out there that that can be smoothed out when it comes to actual field conditions.
Yeah, I'd be happy to let our design team answer that. I suspect it was to avoid trees. But John Hessler's here, if you care, he could respond to that if you like.
Well, let's, I've got a couple more questions for staff, so let's wait to open the public hearing for now. But we can, we can get to that. The other questions I have were just kind of housekeeping-type stuff on the conditions of approval. There seem to be a number of items that are boilerplate that aren't really relevant: lighting, water conservation and landscaping, copper building elements, fire access roads.
I included those just in the event that, you know, that was, they were protective. If they're not applicable, then they're just not applicable. But we were mindful not to continue to, there were more, much more that were taken out.
Sure, sure. And I know you guys did really dig down in some of the, some of the environmental ones specific. I was just curious if that was intentional. I don't, I don't think it matters if they're included or not.
Okay. Just some points of clarification. When do we expect the project to take place, and how long do we expect the project to take?
We're, we're working on the preliminary plans now and are hoping to get them submitted for, with your approval. If this is approved and that remains intact, then we would be looking at submitting for plan check in May, and then going to council to, you know, putting the project out to bid and hopefully ultimately beginning construction in September outside the nesting season. And we're expecting it to be about a two-week, excuse me, six-week construction term with one day for the crane to lift the pre-made, prefabricated bridge in a place and then take the old one away.
And during the construction, will the, during the six-week construction period, will the trail still be accessible?
Yes.
Great. And then the, I have a question for the consultants, but I'll wait until we open the public hearing for that. As part of the stormwater master plan, are you going to look at the retaining pond on Seymour? I believe the, there's a retaining pond that was put in, and it's sort of, I'm curious as to how well that's being maintained. And it was originally, you know, it's sort of, the timing coincides, there were some drainage changes made around the time that the development was done in that area, and I'm not sure what their impact is and if that drainage pond is being maintained properly.
In answer to the question, yes. I believe all the existing conditions and opportunities will be studied in the, in the master drainage plan. That's.
That one is maybe feeding into part of the water problem, so I'd just like to request that we maybe take a look at that as, specifically look at that as part of the drainage in that area. I don't have any other questions, so I'm going to close this part of the meeting and open things up for, do you have any other questions, John, or Tom?
Open it up to the applicant?
Yeah.
For the rest of the staff?
Yep. Open it up to the rest of the staff. Comment?
Does, okay. Sorry. Yeah, I mean, if, if, this would be a good time.
Do you have any, do you have, since you're presenting with the city, I think Tom raised a question of the three right angles. Could you speak to that, please?
Sure, be happy to. Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the commission. My name is John Hessler, and I'm with David Powers and Associates. We are the environmental consultants that were retained to help with the design of the project. This is Anthony Richardson from Big Scardosa, the engineering designer. One of the most important things on this entire project was we did everything possible to avoid impacts because we know that that drainage channel, that corridor, is very sensitive, and we know the environment in which we're operating. In fact, we had just finished the same kind of analysis on the Pillar Cidos Bridge that was just finished. So we went out there and specifically with the engineering team and city staff, we looked for location where we could put the replacement bridge that would avoid any of the sensitive habitat, because we knew going in that anything that we couldn't avoid, we were going to have to come up with some kind of mitigation and possibly long-term monitoring. Not to mention, we knew the Coastal Commission and the other agencies would probably ask us to go back and see if we could avoid it. Anyway, so we went into it looking for how could we put that trail in there. And so the location we chose, as Bruce mentioned, was one where we could avoid the loss of any trees crossing the drainage. And then when you get to the south side where you're referring to, there is kind of a nice natural opening that kind of snakes, if you will, through the trees, and again, are, it was just a simple objective, which is how to get the trail in there and avoid impacts. So yes, you are correct. It's not a perfect straight shot, but the alternative was one which we and the city felt we did not want to go down that, that road in terms of what it would entail. We would have to get a bunch of permits, so it would definitely add a lot of complexity. So that was the basic reason.
So the way that it jogs on the south side is specifically to avoid existing trees?
That's right. But if I could add, we have just finished a topographical survey and tree survey, so now we have an accurate map of the existing conditions, including the trees. And so our civil engineer is going to start putting an actual design to that trail, and it'll be similar, but I would expect the curves to be the east.
Sure, I understand. Well, I, my request then would be as you transition from design drawings to working drawings, that you do what you can to make that more navigable.
Definitely.
I think the specific feedback is if you look at the existing trail where it goes on the south side of the bridge and turns left after the bridge, if you monitor any of the pedestrian and bike activity, oftentimes people, especially kids, will crash right at that intersection, they'll tip over because they're crossing the bridge, they turn left, and they just fall over because they're trying to avoid trees or distracted by things. So anything you can do to soften those angles and make it easier will, you know, have an impact on people. Similarly, bikes and pedestrians in that area, you have a lot of near collisions that are a frequent event. So I think, I don't know about Tom, but I'm out there almost every day, so I'm very familiar with that particular juncture to Thomas' point. Anything you can do to smooth it out, not have such sharp angles will, I think, help.
And you see that on the north side as well? Because the existing trail has quite a sharp angle on the north side.
I don't see it on the north side, as much of an impact on the north side. I mean, on the south side, it's definitely a big impact. I don't know what it is. Maybe it's the fact that you're surrounded by a bunch of trees as you cross over the bridge, and it's, but.
And it's not as clearly delineated between trail and surrounding areas. Okay.
Yeah, yeah. I had a question about the materials. Is this the same material that's being used on the Pillar Cidos Bridge?
Yes, that's, that's the idea. The one difference is Pillar Cidos had a lot of existing steel foundation elements, and this bridge will just, won't have any of those. It'll just be concrete walls, aluminum superstructure, and Alaskan yellow cedar timber decking.
So in the staff report, it talks about the non-reflective material. It's going to be the same type of material, though, that you had, the same aluminum superstructure?
That's, that's right. We have, we are going to look at an alternative fiberglass truss system, but we're, at the moment, we're looking at an aluminum bridge that will be similar to Pillar Cidos.
Okay. And there's no architectural review for today's hearing, as I saw in the staff report, but the aluminum grade that you've put on, that we've put, the city on the Pillar Cidos Bridge has a very, very beautiful appearance when you look at it. It reflects the natural colors of Half Moon Bay. A fiberglass material, I think, would not have that same quality and would not be consistent with, you know, the other bridges in the area. So it's just a piece of feedback. I think it's a very, it's a very visually prominent area in the community, one of the areas that people see on the outside. And so when you're introducing artificial materials like fiberglass, I think it takes away from the visual aesthetic, and some arguments could, some pretty clear arguments could be made about using a natural or, you know, better material like the aluminum. This is 10 feet wide, so I don't know if you're familiar with the, we had some tourists traveling recently in Half Moon Bay who, they didn't speak English, and they, have you heard this story? They were apparently nudists. So they were trying to find a beach in Half Moon Bay, they got on the wrong side of the bridge, and they had to be rescued. The concern is you've got a bridge that's now 10 feet wide. Are we going to put a bollard or something in there to keep people from driving vehicles across the bridge?
I think that's something we'll discuss with the staff. We did take that approach with Pillar Cidos, it was a removable bollard and beach end there.
Yes, I think, I'd highly recommend that for that bridge because it's so close to Pillar Cidos parking. We have a lot of extracurricular activities happening in the area with RV vehicles and whatnot, so having a bollard will help keep the traffic off, inappropriate traffic off the bridge. I think those are all the questions I had. Oh, one other question was the crane that you're taking, that you're going to bring out there, you know, if you look at the erosion that's happening along the bluff tops, there's a lot of, from, again, I'm not a geologist, but by outward appearances, there's a lot of instability along the cliffs. And the concern is the size of the crane that you're bringing out there, and its impact, can the bluff sustain a vehicle of that size, and how long will it be there?
Yeah, so the crane would be quite close to the existing bridge location while it's removing it and close to the new bridge. So it'll be back past the bluffs where it's a relatively shallow channel while it's actually lifting. And we are going to take a crane, a crane operator out to the site to walk along the trail to see if they see any issues, but at this point, we don't anticipate them.
Okay, great. Thank you. Any other questions? Okay. And we'll close this part of it and open things up for public comment. I have one green sheet from Sarah Polgar. Please turn on the microphone.
Hello, my name is Sarah Polgar. I'm with the Coastside Land Trust, I'm a board member, and I'm just here on behalf of the, of the land trust today to speak in favor of this project. We're really pleased to see this moving forward and that the city has moved forward so quickly on it because it's, it's kind of dire out there. The, the, one thing, I think this has been covered clearly, but I just want to kind of put this out there that it's our understanding that the materials that will be used on the trail connection on the south side will be the same, consistent with what's used on our, the Coastside Land Trust trail already. Furthermore, I think you already just addressed this, but that the alignment will affect the minimum number of trees possible. I know that was important to you, but also to us. And then I didn't necessarily see this in the report, but I did want to just touch upon another really important thing, and this will probably be especially important considering that the alignment will be a little bit wiggly perhaps, is that the new, the realignment is properly fenced, signed for wayfinding so that people know where to go, and maybe that, you know, fencing's appropriate and may not, that that's, whatever is needed should be put in to make sure that it's safe. And, you know, and also considering that if a bollard's used, for instance, that it's prominent, that it's got some sort of marking to make it prominent so people don't bump into it too as they come across from the north side or across the trail towards the north. So those are basically the things I just wanted to raise, but we're very pleased that this project's moving forward, so we're just wanted to voice our support for it tonight. So thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments. And I think the, some of the questions you've raised, I think, have been addressed in the staff report. There's no plan to remove trees under the current plan, so. Are there any other comments? Okay, I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing. Okay. So, gentlemen.
Let me, let me address this to staff, I guess. Is there any action that you feel that we need to take on the response that you provided? You think everything is adequately covered? It seems like everything was already covered in the bio report or the staff report to me, but.
Yeah, and we checked with our biologists, and they said the same thing, that those things have been covered, and that we had those things in mind when we approached the project. So yes, we believe that there's adequate protections that we've incorporated in the project as proposed.
Okay. And do we need to, do we need to condition the project so that the bridge is 10 feet wide, considering we have a condition in here that notes that they shall conform to the approved plans that are only 8 feet wide?
We can go ahead, the staff will go ahead and modify the exhibit and cross out the eight and put 10 feet and put NTS not to scale.
Okay.
I mean, it certainly seems to me that there's a, there's a clear need. I also bike that trail, and I think one or two of the issues that were raised, if you ride at twilight and so on, having fences. at twilight and so on, having fences reflection or something would be a very good idea because it's, it's kind of dark under some of those trees. So, you know, I didn't read that in there, but hopefully that will be fully addressed. But I think project-wise, as a user of the trail, and of course, somebody that sits on the Planning Commission, seems to me an adequate replacement for the problem we have right now. Obviously, we, I'd like to see something that lasts 50 years, although I probably won't be around to ride my bike in 50 years, but again, I'm, I guess, fairly convinced that this project is designed to be relatively long-lasting. So I think my issues have been addressed, and certainly I have, I think it's a project that's deserving to be approved, but I'll certainly wait to hear comments from my other fellow commissioners on what their feelings and issues are. So that's all I want to say.
John, any comments, questions, discussion?
I agree with everybody else, it's a great project going forward. It's kind of disappointing that the trail going south from the bridge is a little awkward, just because there's a group of trees there. Hundreds of people are going to be traveling this trail, and trees kind of come and go, and I'm sure that when we get into the civil, the civil engineer, I trust that they're going to do a good job of kind of making it a little bit more, you know, kind of beautiful and articulately nice trail, you know, the actual refinement of this.
So I share a lot of the comments. I think this is an important project. I agree with sort of things that I've read in here. I had a couple of questions. One, having read through the letter from the California Coastal Commission and the response, I think you've addressed all of the, for the most part, most of the issues that were raised. The one thing that I see here is, there was a request by the Coastal Commission to have a inspection, a daily inspection before construction occurs every day. That's not necessarily, is that by a biologist? So it's on the last page, three of three, having a trained and designated member of the team conduct an inspection before construction occurs each day. Special attention must be given to any small mammal, mammal burrows, et cetera. So are you going to know for the condition of approval, you're going to have a biologist at the beginning of the project, at least from the condition of approval, but you're not planning to have somebody there every day? Is that correct?
Yeah, every day of work is occurring, John, maybe...
Right. The intent was that we would have a biologist there every day when there's ground disturbing activities. I agree with you, it's a little confusing, because the way the Coastal Commission staff put it, it was like for the entire project. We just wanted to clarify, to make sure that that was when the ground disturbing activities are occurring. Sometimes when people say the whole project, they take it to mean you need a monitor out there, even when they're just doing setup and stuff that clearly is not going to have any kind of impact. So in our response, we say that anytime there's ground disturbing activities, the biologist will be there every day. And that was something we had already agreed, even before we got this comment.
Is that in the condition of approval? I thought I saw the biologist is only there on the, when construction begins, not every day when there's construction.
When you say you saw that, was that in the biology report?
No, in the conditions of approval themselves.
Oh.
So I see the pre-construction survey, oh, got it, number 20. It's, you've got it, great. Okay. I think we've addressed everything, all the issues that have been raised. Any other concerns, questions? Okay, well, I'm going to go ahead and close the discussion.
So, are you looking for a recommendation this time?
Yeah, I'd like to, do we have a motion?
Okay. Recommend approved PDP 1604, an application for coastal development permit, CDP for the removal of the existing Seymour Bridge and its replacement with a new bridge and trail extension approximately 105 feet east or upstream of the current bridge crossing alignment. The existing Seymour Bridge is a pedestrian bridge that spans the Seymour drainage, affecting the Half Moon Bay Coastal Trail that is generally located west of the West Street Terminus of the Seymour Street, approximately 1,100 feet south, the Popper Beach Parking Lot, and several hundred feet inland, or eastward of the coastal bluff and beach in the PED Plan Unit Development Zoning District, and the Planned Development District General Plan slash Loustle Coastal Program Land Use Designation. Approval of the CDP is recommended based upon the findings and evidence contained in Exhibit A of the draft resolution, subject to the conditions of approval contained in Exhibit B with changes to 10 feet.
And that includes the changes for the bollard?
I don't have a bollard.
And consistency for materials consistent on the south side of the project?
The materials are consistent, that's noted in the staff report.
Okay, great.
Good.
So do we have, so the only condition that we attached to that was the 10 feet wide, and then the question is, are we attaching the bollard in there as well? Or consider putting a bollard in?
Correct.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Can we get a roll call vote?
Yes. Commissioner Evans?
Yes.
Commissioner Conroy?
Yes.
Commissioner Demond?
Yes.
And Commissioner Hernandez?
Yes.
Passes 4-0.
Okay. That item is closed. The next item on the agenda is Planning Commission Business and Recommendations. So we have the architectural review process is on the agenda.
Commissioner Evans brought this up at our last meeting, actually brought it up, brought this topic up several meetings ago, and it was agendized at the last Planning Commission meeting, and we only had three of the five planning commissioners there. So there was some discussion that occurred on the topic, but the item was continued to this meeting to discuss the, the concept of adding additional design review, formalizing the informal design review process that we currently have in place, and sharing those thoughts with the rest of the Planning Commission, getting full Planning Commission to weigh in, hopefully at this meeting.
Great.
And maybe Commissioner Evans maybe add some more to that. That was our understanding.
Okay, so I appreciate you guys extending the discussion for less than my benefit. So, John, did you want to start?
It's my understanding that the City Council has had the Planning Commission responsible to evaluate and work with the design review or architectural review component of projects. So we're the ones responsible for looking after this, and in my tenure so far, we're experiencing that projects come through fairly complete in the design process. And so in terms of doing an architectural review, we are really faced with kind of late in the standard design process, making any suggestions that might be changes in sort of the massing of a building, the siding of a building, the circulation, flow of how a building might look. And more typically, and the design process is the same regardless of the size of a project. And so there's different steps that everything goes through, a different decision-making. And in terms of how the building looks, or how it's, it's on a piece of property, in the early stages of the design concept is the time where, if that's going to need adjusting, adjusting or suggestions, is where it's appropriate to do the architectural review. And, right, and so, and I think we've been, well, I'll speak for myself, but I think I'm speaking for the Planning Commission, we're looking for ways to expedite projects and make them predictable for the applicants as they come through, so that as they get to the point where they're making a final recommend, a final request for approval, with all the detailed documents that are required, and all the reporting, and the staff reporting, that suggesting changes at that time are expensive for the project. And we've also been experiencing where projects come through, and they're kind of okay, they could be more enhancing for the community, but as an architectural review process, we don't really have a choice other than to say, well, it's okay, we approve it. We can't really say, well, come back and start over again, it's not fair. So in talking with the staff a little bit, and looking to, want to discuss it more with our Planning Commission in an open forum like this, it seems like that if we did a pilot project, where we're, because there's a lot of questions and a lot of issues, well, how's this really done? What are the projects? How's it affected? We don't really have good guidelines yet, except in the residential areas. And so if we were to be, just suggest a two-phase submittal process, so that when it's the architectural review phase, that's an informal, well, the project is brought to the planning, well, since we're the architectural review group, it comes forward at just the schematic design phase, without an elaborate staff report. And it's just, we're not making final decisions or final, any finality to recommendations. And so that the project then is at a phase where, as we're, as the review group is making suggestions, it's not so traumatic in the design process. And then they would come back further, in the second normal submittal phase, where the project requirements and, and the staff reporting is more complete. So far, we've had most of the projects that are coming through that we see have to come back a second time anyway, and that's been very expensive for these applicants. They're, they have to redo engineering, they have to redo some reporting, there's very little opportunity to discuss flexibility, things like that. So it seemed like, maybe a pilot program for a year where we look at projects that are in areas that are not in the residential zone districts, and come up with some sort of mechanism to say which projects would be exempt, because, you know, if somebody's not changing a building, or, you know, if they're moving a window, you know, there's going to be some formula or some, probably case by case, determination of when we would actually see as an architectural review and when we wouldn't. And I'd also add, I just want to be real clear, that maybe everyone has their idea of how things ought to look, I'm sure I do, you know, and this is not an attempt to impose in particular person's thinking on how things ought to be. I think that having a review group is, that collaboration is really beneficial to everybody, to the applicants, to the staff, to the community generally when it's done, as long as we can do it in a mechanism that doesn't require extra work for our staff, not preferring, they're not going different directions they would normally go. And so that's kind, and I think ultimately, there'll be some other form of architectural review that we don't have now, and don't know what that is, and we're in the middle of general plan updates, and charrettes coming up and stuff, so it's, don't want to get bogged down in trying to get elaborate discussions, other than to try to step forward with a pilot project like this. So we don't talk about it for four or five years and never get anywhere.
Right.
And I guess I'd also have to say that I'm a little bit anxious that we don't get to the point where we want to, in the non-residential districts, be looking to hire, the very expensive process of hiring consultants that would be bringing forward design guidelines, when what we really need to have is some sort of group of people that review projects, that have their opinion, and there's a consensus that things move forward. It also gives an opportunity to, at this point in time, if it's the Planning Commission doing this, which it is, each of us are uncomfortable trying to make suggestions in areas that we don't know much about, or we don't have much experience with. And so it's an opportunity to also educate us, and move forward in that way, and to be learning about design principles as it applies to the built environment. So that's my stepping off point.
That's great, Les, your comments?
Yeah, I mean, certainly we've wrestled with several projects. We don't have a whole lot of projects that, you know, so that I think I'm looking for some guidelines that in effect say, you know, these are the critical projects that require the process. But I'm also concerned that we have a process that's not ad hoc, you know, that, you know, these are the steps, and, you know, I don't want to see applicants having to come back two or three times, as you indicated, because that's, that's costly. The other question I have is, staff, in order to get a project on the schedule, don't they in effect have to, a design?
Yes, sir.
So, you know, kind of where are we from, you know, having to do it all over again to, you know, so I'm, in my mind, what saves them money from the fact that they have a design, they're going to have to come to us anyway, and then they may have to go back and do changes because, you know, we have something we would like to see changed. So I'm, what I'm trying to focus on, you know, what, what will change, in effect, because they already have to submit a project that shows what the, what the design of the project is, so.
So you're questioning the idea that, does this actually help? I guess that's the fundamental question. Is it actually going to help the applicant in the process? And I know, I guess, it's an interesting question for staff to get their opinion on this. I'd be curious also to get other commissioners' opinions on this.
From our standpoint, absolutely, yes, it does help, and that's why we've been instituting that process. So when we do have those projects, we do take them for conceptual review. For example, like the library, and in the past, when we've had other projects that were, you know, of a significant scale, or that were different, like for example, we did one for...
Odyssey?
Yeah, for the, for the Odyssey, that the outdoor area where the sunken boat concept was. So it was a little different, so, but, so it doesn't necessarily have to be a big scale, it could be an unusual nature or a unique project. So, yes, but in answer to the question, yes, the applicant does submit a design proposal, and yes, we'd be happy, I mean, it's not doing any extra work, because that's what we currently do anyway, when we do get a project like that. And I believe that that kind of conceptual feedback is helpful. It's kind of like, are they heading in the right direction, or is something not right with it, or, you know, the project may present, you know, complications or problems. So I think that's helpful for the applicant, yes, indeed.
So, John, I'm trying to figure out, what do you want that will be a change, in effect, from what we've seen a few last year projects?
Do you have any?
Do you want to weigh in on that, Tom?
Well, I mean, it's, the number of projects we're talking about is very small. It may be one or two, maybe three or four, because it's a very busy year, I would think. I can't, I can't think of many projects that we've had over my, that, that should have had, or I felt would have been better for having a preliminary level of review. I think if the project came to us, that if it wasn't up to snuff, we'd send it back. Yeah, it's, you're right, it's, it's more expensive, and from a design perspective... Yeah, it's, you're right, it's more expensive, and from a design professional's point of view, it's maddening. But I don't know, I mean, I support, I mean, I think staff is keenly aware of that, that many of us on the commission feel that projects of a certain scale or certain scope are worthy of a preliminary review. And moving forward, I don't know if it's so much a pilot program, but it's just our informal policy. You know, anything formal takes action by council. We can't, you know, we can't drive that, but I certainly support any opportunity to provide a better service for applicants, and especially if that, you know, if that adds another item to our agenda or requires us seeing a project twice, if it's a better project, I definitely support that. And I think there's a lot that can be gained from informal reviews. I mean, we're not talking about taking the, I assume we're not talking about taking the architectural review one week and then two weeks later following through with the CDP, right? You're talking informal review at some point ahead of the formal review. And I, yeah, that's sort of last time we met too, I'm glad you said that.
Yeah, I think it's a terrific idea. I think it helps from a, gives clarity to the process, and I think probably helps us produce a better quality result. So, I mean, if we can, you know, if everybody's in agreement, you know, it sounds like we have at least three people who are in agreement, possibly four here tonight. I think it makes a lot of sense to have, you know, have the applicants, encourage them strongly to give us, you know, an early conceptual design, so that we can give them direction as to whether they're going in the right direction or not. Does that make sense?
Again, this is not, this is not a groundswell change. This is just, you know, when these big projects come, we're on the record that we'd like to, we'd like getting a review, yeah.
And I think the, we'll see what the result is, but with the library, I think that was a really good example of we had a chance to provide feedback before everything was wrapped up, you know? Hopefully that, some of the things I've heard from the design process and how things are moving, it's actually had an impact, so. So what do we do?
I think I can.
Good.
I think to answer your question a little more directly, at some point in every project, you get to a point where you're kind of the schematic design phase. So you've done floor plans, you know what the building's looking like, you know what the materials are, you know, how it fits on a site. And that's the stage where we could most effectively do the architectural review. I don't like doing the architectural review at the end of an evening when we talk about lots of environmental issues and have plenty of public comment about different things, and we're late in the evening and out of a three or four hour meeting, we have 10 minutes to do architectural review, and it's with a project that's fairly complete. And so that whole process to me seems like the architectural review phase of it could happen in the first submittal phase, for the most part. I mean, there's going to be details and fine points, and I think most applicants would be happy to do that. And of course, there's going to be projects that aren't, it's not suitable to do that.
So...
But I know for a fact, there's infill projects coming forward to us that, we haven't seen them yet, but we're going to, that are not huge projects, but they will need to have architectural review.
Okay, are you talking about commercial projects?
Yeah.
Okay.
Non-residential.
Right, I mean, the only project that I can, I can think of now, you know, in my, that I would have liked to have at that time was the multifamily commercial residential on Kelly. I mean, that was one, I think that would have been nice to have an earlier one, but for example, the library, I think that was, so, I mean, the question is magnitude of a project.
What's exempt?
Yeah, what's exempt and what's not, as you say.
Exactly.
So I'm not sure, we want to do that on a policy basis or an ad hoc basis. So I'm trying to also think, well, what exactly do we need at this point, other than making it ad hoc at this point, since we're not going to write anything up, are we?
I was going to ask Bruce what the...
Bruce?
Well, actually, I want to get clarification. Actually, I want to get clarification, because Tom raised the issue of, we're not separating out ARC, but we're still going to do ARC with the project, the architectural review when the final project comes forward. This is just a pre, sort of, a pre-process. Is that, are we in agreement?
Well, right, by the time we do the formal architectural review decision-making, if we've already seen the project, then that goes more quickly.
So Bruce, what do we have to do to have a conceptual architectural review? Is there anything that we need to put in place? John's at the, he is here.
You know, the way this works is...
Let's see if I like what he says.
Is, the way, the way this works is, we tell the applicant right then, we say, we think you would benefit from this review. It's a little, it's a scale or unique character that you would benefit from this, and it's a conceptual review. We don't send notices out, we post it on the agenda, and your, it's kind of a flexible review because your review isn't binding, you're not taking action on it, you're just providing some feedback whether or not the project's heading in the right direction or if you see preceding problems with it. Then, once they take the feedback they've received, integrate that into the project, then they continue to move on the process. So there are some questions about timing, you know, some, for example, some of the downsides to the review is that sometimes you may see things that haven't been flushed out technically. For example, the fire department may not have seen it, we may not have cleared engineering review. So there are some things you're going to see that may not square up in terms of code compliance, but that's the downside to getting a concept review. Planning Commission has to understand that those projects that are presented that are not complete projects, they're concepts. And so that's the feedback that the applicant receives, and then we continue with the formal technical review and moving along in the process till it comes back to you for formal action.
I'll buy that. However, I will say this, when Commissioner Evans and I had spoken about it and Bruce, I do think that we have to formalize in some way this process. I don't think it has to be formalized as and codified, but I do think we have to formalize it and come back to you and define what it is, and define a little bit more clearly what projects are subject to it. You know, Les works around in town, I mean, he's got, you know, you work around, I mean, everybody works around in town, and you've got neighbors asking you, they want to know, when will I be subject to this? And so we have to flush that out a little bit and come back to the commission and get concurrence on what that looks like. And I think as we work through that, the rest of it really becomes pretty straightforward. And I think we're all in agreement on one fact, this will affect very few projects coming forward, you will see, continue to see very few of these regardless of what we do. But I think we all agree on one other thing, is the sooner we get up here and we start to have some of these issues identified and telling folks what we think of their project, it's a lot easier to do it then than it is to do it at the very end of the process and then have an agonizing process going through ARC review after it's fully baked.
Okay.
So I think it's advantage to everybody, and I think it's exactly what Bruce had put forward many months ago, and we just haven't had a lot of projects to use as examples of that process.
Okay, so we'll leave it to you to come back with the formal recommendation. In the meantime, if we have a significant non-residential project, you'll encourage the applicant, the planning commission really encourages you to get a conceptual design upfront.
We've never had any problem getting an applicant to want to come to the planning commission, they're always, they're very happy to come here, so.
Okay, great. Okay, so, John, happy with that?
Yeah, I think the quicker we can push forward what's, what scale of projects we're wanting to look at is really important, and that's not an easy question to answer. And I think the reason John and I talked about doing it as a pilot program is we're probably going to have to experiment as we go along. We could take quite a while trying to just define what's appropriate projects. There could be some small projects that, and the applicant may be resisting wanting any permits at all. Never happens here in Half Moon Bay, right? And it would really expedite everything for everybody if we could review that as an architectural view and not have the staff have to make recommendations that we have to somehow overturn or go against.
Great, so I think we're all in alignment on this, so, great, thank you. So I'm going to go ahead and, does anybody have anything else for the planning commission business? Yeah, I'm going to close that. Planning Commission Communications, anybody?
The charrette is in progress. Joel's been doing a great job. We've met with CNU, one of the potential providers for us, is it looking at timing questions still? I'm not sure when it's appropriate to say, you know, what to talk about here until we get a little bit more concrete information, but I think we're doing a better job of defining what the scope is, and I think it's becoming pretty clear that there's sort of two parts of Half Moon Bay. There's what I would call this sort of Safeway, Cafino, Hardware Store triangle, which is everybody's daily commerce, and then there's the part of Half Moon Bay that's south of the Main Street Bridge. It's really a different kind of scale and pace of town, and it's starting to become clear of how to define that a little more carefully and where we could really get some really valuable feedback from a charrette and also somehow coordinate that with the general plan effort that we're going through.
Are we going to see sort of a recommendation before we move forward to charrette? Is that the idea?
Yeah.
Okay, excellent. Well, that's exciting. Les? Okay, so I'm going to go ahead and close the Planning Commission Communications section, and then I guess we're towards the end of the evening. Do I, do I have a motion?
Move to adjourn.
A second.
All right, aye. All right.